Okay, let's go ahead and call me in order to say.
Sir, if you want to thank each one of you for being here tonight and having a special guest with us. And we'll go ahead and get started. And we're gonna have our pleas of allegiance. I'll do that, and then Mr. Miller has agreed to do our indication for us. So I'll do the pleas, Mr. Miller.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for the many blessings that you've given each of us. We thank you, Father, for the gift of life that is so precious. And we pray, God, that as we come here tonight, that you will, that you'll speak to the hearts and the minds of our council and our mayor, that truly, Lord, the right things would be done. Give them guidance and leadership in all that they do. Father, I pray over this community. I pray for safety in all aspects, whether it be at the schools, the homes, the businesses, whatever it might be. Father, I pray for this country. I pray, God, that you'll speak in honor to us, that you'll speak to our officials, that they would follow your guidance. Because truly, God, if we will follow you, the right things will occur, and the right things then will come about. In everything we do, may we always be very careful to give you praise and honor and glory that you so richly deserve. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
First time on agenda is a recommendation to approve the minutes from our last meeting. We have a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion.
You agree? Is there a second?
No, second.
Any discussion? I'm favoring the I. Thank you very much. We'd like to ask for our principals to come forward, please. And I've got a check for each one for $6,229.31 instead of $7. Hit her off. I'm gonna give each one your check. If you would, just tell us how your first week of school is, and how the funds will be used, and what to use it for in the past. Let me come back to my schedule. We appreciate you all very much. If you have anything, we know this gives no good cause. If you would, just kind of give us an overview of what your mayor plans for this money. I'll let you off.
We had a great first week, I thought. The kids are doing well. They're getting back into the routine. Teachers were real excited. We've got a new reading program, so they've been very thrilled with that, and that's been really good. The money that we last got, we spent mostly in Wi-Fi. Our building was not Wi-Fi, so we couldn't use iPads, things like that. And we've been working to get a lot of the wiring and things like that for that. I gave some money to PE, and they bought some things. We bought a better quality projector. They do some health lessons out there and some different things. We bought a new projector for the library. So we've, we want to continue with our technology. Technology seems to be the name of the game, so.
First of all, at the middle school, we want to thank you again for your support. It really helps us toward our expenditures, and we really appreciate you for doing that. We had a great first week of school. Kids came back eager and fired up, and I don't know about the teachers, but the kids were excited. We had a really good week. And traffic went well. We was worried about traffic first day or two, but it went well. Parents did a really good job getting some getting there early and did a good job with the traffic. We was worried about it. A lot of our expenditures this past year, a lot of them have been our new pre-engineering program, which we're very proud of. It's been a little bit toward it. Kids really love it. We have 120 students now in our pre-engineering program, seventh and eighth grade. This coming year, we've included two more classes called Magic of Electrons and Flight in Space for our eighth grade. So they're gonna have a total of four classes, these eighth graders will, before they even get to high school. So they got a really good base of pre-engineering going into the high school. We're really proud of that. We spent some more money toward that. Spent a lot of money toward projectors. They're really expensive. And trying to keep up the classrooms as best we can, and our technology also. Again, we say thank you.
From the high school perspective, we had a great first week, or at least most of the kids did. We are up, our enrollment is up at 507 as of this afternoon, which is great for us. The U.S. News and World Report came out just prior to school starting that Hamilton High School's list is one of the best high schools of the state of Alabama. We've known that for a long time. It just took them a while to figure that out. And very seriously, we have a lot of programs. Mr. Devers talked about the engineering. We have a very similar program. We have a digital electronics class this year. James Beasley is the only teacher in the state of Alabama certified to teach that. And he thinks he's a guinea pig, because he somewhat is. But we have a civil engineering class that we've started along with our nursing program. We have been approved for the Certified Nursing Assistant Program through the state. Our teacher education, our industrial maintenance, our work with Bebel as usual. Very, very active, very busy, a lot of things going on. Our money that we get through you, as both of the other two principals talked to you about, have centered around technology, and probably that's where it will be this year. We have outfitted the library lab, computer lab, last year. Took about 30 computers there. Took a lot of money to do that. We needed it, because our kids use that lab on a daily basis. So that's where we're headed. And again, thank you on behalf of the Hamilton High School for continuing to support us, and thank you for everything you do.
Rodney, tell us about the bank. How's it?
Oh, we have a bank. We opened up for business today. The First National Bank and the high school went to work together, actually in October. We visited schools in Florence, Muscle Shoals. And the bank, the First National Bank, wanted to do this. We wanted it done for a practical education from a very, very practical standpoint. As of today, there were between 35 and 40 accounts that had already been opened. And that's way above what I had felt we would have, especially being in school only one week. We had, I think we had 16 accounts that were applied for the orientation night for the freshmen. And it's a great opportunity for us. If you get an opportunity to come over and look at the stuff, it is, I really can't describe it, because it looks good, it was done correctly, and those folks have done a great job to bring that into the school. And we're very proud of that. But thank you for asking. Like I said, it's our first business day.
How is the AIGI plan of this?
They have some of the papers down. It's a big process still, and it's been kind of slow. But there's one section of concrete band that has to be poured, I believe I'm correct there. And that part of it will be through. It's just taking a long time, and it's been two years in the process. Mr. and Ms. Jackson probably are about ready to finish it, and we are. I know Mr. Devers is. I mean, we just, we are. It's gonna be a beautiful facility. If you don't get by there, get by there tonight and look at the lights. It really sets a place on.
And you've added a new center for the children and the, what's my word? Where the grow plants?
Oh, yeah, greenhouse.
Greenhouse.
Yeah, we're building a greenhouse. We got a grant through the Northwest Alabama RC&amp;D.
That really calmed down, didn't it?
It did, it really did. And we are at, we were at a standstill. We're using a product for the roof and the side walls. Nobody else around here is used. The only problem is getting it. So it was actually supposed to be in one week. It stretched out to about five or six weeks, and then all of a sudden, school started. So we'll work on that in the near future. The deadline for the grant to be completed has been extended to December because of that. And that's a, that's a big deal.
Well, my farms are pretty as far as I've got, like, I've got a bunch of them.
We'll sell you some more, and we'll sell you some tomato plants in the business period. We're excited about that.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
May I ask, how much of an increase did you, you said you had an increase? How much of an increase in the amount, roughly?
Oh, thank you for asking that question. We're probably, I can't remember what we ended up with, but we're probably, conservatively, probably from enrollment officially, I would think we're up probably 30 or 40. I really don't know. I hadn't.
You gave a final number a while ago. Are y'all seeing increases at your schools?
About 15 students.
15?
We had a decrease. We had a large class go to the high school, and small class come in. We were a few students less.
Right now, we'll, if we graduate everyone, and that's our goal, we'll graduate 100, 100-plus. We have 150 in the ninth grade, 130 in the 10th, about 120-something, and then about 100. So we're, you know, we're a bunch of those kids. But that's good.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Liam, for helping with our traffic. We had some traffic problems. Our kindergarten parents, it took us a little bit to get them dry, but they already helped us, and it was very, and we appreciated it.
And we thank our principals, the school officials. We have an excellent school system, and we appreciate our principals and all our teachers. And a good job that they do. At this time, I could ask Kirk P. Wood to come forward. Pete was gonna be here, but he had another appointment. So Kirk P. Wood, just kind of give us an update on what we're gonna be asking for today.
Well, the environmental work that we were doing at the Muncie Weir Building, the first phase of it there is actually complete. They have decanted the water up the ponds. There's eight inches of water left on one and nine inches on the other. The dikes have been taken down to a level so that any future water that falls runs out. So we won't have that water building back up, unless like rain that we've had would have. But that's, that's under control. And then the contaminated soils have been dug up. They are stockpiled up there right now. They've been tested. The area around them has been tested. All those results are going to ADM, as soon as ADM concurs with the results of the test, then they'll be hauled off to landfill. We expect results back from ADM within, within this week. There was one additional spot when they dug them up, there was one additional spot, but they found a very small spot that they'll take when they haul the soils away that they're talking about. So that makes us ready to move forward with whatever direction that the council decides we need to be moving with, with the site, with the building, which, whatever we need to do.
Do you have, what was Tom talking about? Proposal to at least take bids for demolition? You're not voting on demolition, you're voting to take bids on what Kirk, on what Pete was gonna present to us.
We, yeah, we, we are ready to do that, yes. We can be ready. We can start advertising next week in the papers. We, we need this week to get a few things together. I talked to Jimlin, who y'all met before, our environmental, who was up here doing the work on building. We've been working together in concert. She's been helping us write some specs for the recycling of the building materials. We talked about that before. You know, we have to recycle. We want to crush some of that concrete to stabilize the sludge in the ponds and then fill those up. And then also to maybe use some fill material in the basement, some of those other areas. She's also helping us put together specs to try to recycle as much of the building as possible to do two things. One, the money that the contractor gets back off the recycling cuts down on the cost that he charges you. And then also to not haul it to a landfill. We were talking today, I think the question came up last time about the cost of crushing the concrete on the site versus hauling it away. And we've looked up some numbers on that. We've done some research. Depending on where you haul it to, it's probably about $35 to $45 a tonne to dump that material. Jimlin told me that one of the last projects she did up in Dershowen County, they crushed it for about 15, $17 to $20 a tonne to crush it. And then additionally, in addition to it being cheaper to crush it, you're not bringing in material that gets into the sludge in the pond and do that stabilization. If we don't, if we don't use that, we have to haul in some cement to do some stabilization in the pond. So, you know, the recycling materials, again, you know, will help us now. In addition, in the talking that we had today, we were talking about that, going over that, and over all the things that are in the building right now. You know, there's lots, there's, there's a ton of plastic from all those water bottles. You know, there's, there's a lot of equipment. There's all the steel, obviously. There's lots of different things in the building that, that, all those things that can be recycled. And so we would like to extend the advertisement period longer than we normally do. We're required to go 21 days to advertise a project like this. We'd like to advertise for 21 days, have a pre-bid walkthrough, bring all the contractors that have become interested in that first 21 days here, walk them through the building, let them lay eyes on everything, let them look at everything, and see everything that's there to be seen, and then give them another 21 days to put their numbers together. Because it takes a little longer when you put together the numbers for the recycling. They have to go out and they have to find the places where they can recycle them, what's the closest place to take everything, and what kind of prices they get per tonne and those sort of things. So we'd like, instead of advertising for the normal three or four weeks, we'd like to advertise, or at least take six weeks before we actually take bids from the time we start advertising.
Well, that'd be a time for us to see the numbers and see if it's gonna be feasible.
Well, that's before we even take the bids. So it'd be, you know, six weeks before we actually get the numbers.
So that'd be fine.
And then, you know, it's the same thing that's in every bid package that we do. You have the right to reject, you know, the bids if they come in something crazy that we can't do. But, but that does.
This process went down, Kirk, because at one time, you know, two and a half years ago, when we first got in the office, there was at least three people met with us in the first quarter of the year, first few months, when we took that building down and paid us. I'm not so sure that's gonna happen now, because I don't know what process steel is, and copper is, and aluminum, and all that things. It may actually cost more. I mean, we may be, there's not gonna be enough salvage out there to do it, like it might could have been down then.
Yeah, well, you know, as you know from the conversations we had, we were questioning that mentality at that time.
And that might could have been then, that's just what they thought.
Of doing it correctly and hauling everything where it needed to be hauled and disposing of things as they were supposed to be properly disposed of. You know, but yeah, I think the price of everything has gone down. You know, steel has gone down, and copper, and like I say, all those, all those material prices have gone, gone down as well.
Well, did we discuss this openly? I think some of us have discussed it individually, about saving some of those bricks. You know, we have a walking trail to make the trail out of the bricks. Did we discuss that with you, or is that a possibility? If we save on using something else, and we certainly want, wanted a walking trail along the river there, and I don't know, would bricks be okay to use in it? I would think it would. I've seen it in other places.
They would. Yes, we can, we can save some of the brick. Some of the brick, I don't know that you want to say all of the bricks.
Well, I don't know. I mean, if we take all the.
It's a lot of, it's a lot upon that building. So some of them we'd want to send to some recycling again to recoup some of the coal.
Sure.
But I'm sure that we could find a place on site to, to store however many bricks that we decided we wanted salvaged to use for a future project. In addition to storing, I'm glad you brought that up, I forgot to mention. We anticipate there being more crushed concrete than we need to stabilize the ponds and to do some of the filling in the basement area. But that's a very, turns out it's a pretty good commodity to have right now. She was talking about in Dershowen County, they're using it a lot for the basic roads and in field areas. And we can crush it, once we get to crusher here, we can crush it into multiple sizes, even as big as the 57-stove, you know, and we can stockpile that on the site if we don't need to use it immediately. We can stockpile that on the site that can be used all around town for whatever projects you need and or whatever future project we do out there at the site. So we do anticipate having some additional material left over to be used, or we need to like, or sold.
So all the bottles of water and plants, yeah, can be? Such a waste.
Kirk, what would you need from us if we just go ahead and at least get the proposals? Only at least get the process you're.
Yeah, just, just tell us you're ready to advertise, and we'll start. Like I said, we'll.
So you can advertise for 21 days, come back and have a walkthrough, advertise for another 21 days?
We probably wouldn't have to advertise for the other 21 days. We'll just give them another 21 days before we actually take, take the bids.
Six or eight weeks now before we actually get a price, and then we'll decide then the price.
Then we'll sit down. And we do plan on having some fairly detailed bid forms, particularly with the recycling and all the things that are going on. So we'll have some, we'll have some pretty good apples to apples numbers that we can sit down and look at and decide, you know, how we're gonna do this and where we're gonna go.
Well, sir, if you don't have a problem, at least proceed with that. That doesn't mean you're gonna tear it down. It means you're just gonna see what it's gonna take to do it.
What the numbers are. And numbers, you know, I think we've talked to him before about estimates. This thing, and I've had contractors that, the only thing that I've had people who've looked at it other than some of those guys at the very beginning, but some of the more bigger contractors that do this recycling work, the only thing they've been able to give us is a per-tonne number, you know, as far as the materials, type of materials. So none of them, we really don't have a, a good handle on wood to do this. So, you know, it could, could be a low number, could be high. So many variables, we just don't know.
I want one way to find out.
One sure way to find out, kind of put a number on there.
Well, I make a motion that we move forward and advertise and see what interest is out there that will come into us and get started.
No second.
Any other discussion? I'm favoring the I. Thank you, sir.
We'll get to that.
Will you get something, John, so you get the papers?
Yes, we'll, we'll send our attachment to the papers at the end of this week.
And where are we, you advertise this? Locally and?
We'll probably go statewide, since we don't know. Any project over $100,000 requiring to advertise statewide, since we don't know, we'll decide this way to advertise statewide. Plus, you know, this, we need to draw some interest first, and from some, from some all around the state.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. I think you got an email over the weekend from Andrea Harvest, and one of the things she wanted to, she sent all as a copy of this SDG Structural Design Group, this is the engineering group, that those structural engineers, and the reason would be on the bank building that we're going to remodel. There's stuff that needs to be done in there that you gotta have a structural engineer to do. Some of the walls that might need to be moved, or some had it. And this, this group that she's used before, we're very familiar with, and would recommend us to hire this group. This Structural Design Group, they're out of, yeah, Birmingham. And what they would do is do a study with her, and give us the recommendations she was gonna do here tonight, and she was not able to come. But basically, it would not exceed the cost of $4,500, and it needs to be done. We're gonna have to have studies like this done in order to move forward with the remodeling of the bank building. So I recommend, with her proposal or her recommendation, is to go ahead and hire this group to let them do their assessment. So we'll do a real motion to do that.
Well, I make a motion that we do it. Can't do anything until we do it.
Can't do anything without it. Is there a second?
No, second.
Okay, Liam, thank you. Any other discussion? I'm favoring the I. Thank you very much.
Also in this, from reading her report and all, and then talking with her, and then being down there going through it, this group will also be very conscious of the historical.
Yes.
Day and part of it. And that, we've got to keep in tag. We've got to make sure that's handled just right.
And we'll be in touch with this, because there's maybe certain things you can and cannot do with that part of the building.
Well, it has to be approved, it has to be stored.
They have to be aware of it. They work well with this, like this. And also, she would, we're getting proposals from the council's information. We had the next meeting for the roof. We've been on the roof, I've been on the roof with our contractors. And we should have a proposal for the next, the next meeting. What we're gonna do is replace the part of the roof where the skylights are, and it's going through the center of the building. They've got metal on top of that that'll have to be replaced, and then removing some of the skylights and replacing some. But we'll have that proposal for the council the next meeting. We're working on that right now. We should have, actually should have the estimates this week, but we wouldn't have time to get it on tonight's agenda. So it'll be on the second, the next meeting, on September 8th, so we can get that. Once we get that proposal done, the roof, we can move forward. Right now, that's the most important thing. What we need to do is get that outside first. Okay? Next recommendation is to hire in the street department at a starting rate of $13.40 an hour. We've had, a few weeks ago, one of our employees, Eric Seals, left. Got a job as a policeman in Red Bay, and had left a vacancy. And what we did on this was, it's got the permission and in talking, was use our current applications since we had a recent current application pool. And we went through these, interviewed some, and Mike's recommendation, and I agree with him, is to hire Brian Waits in the street department for a starting rate of $13.40 an hour. So I'd like to have a motion to approve this recommendation. Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
No, second.
Thank you for answers. Any discussion? I'm favoring the I. Thank you. Next slot we have, we've advertised in the paper, and I had several applications that Rodney and I went through. Spent a couple hours reviewing applications, but we didn't interview that many. We only got a few, just a few. And his recommendation is to hire Mike Erden as a grade four water operator trainee. And the starting rate to pay on this is $14.90 per hour. And I'd like to have a motion to approve of Ryan's recommendation of Mike Erden.
I make a motion, why?
Okay, great, thank you. Is there a second?
No, second.
Okay, Liam. Any other discussion? I'm favoring the I. Let me say this. Each time we hire somebody, there's a lot of thought goes into it, a lot of time goes into it. And we try to find the best qualified folks. Saying that, there's always several that don't get hired. And one of the hardest things for me and the rest of this council is knowing we have so many good applicants and only one or two jobs available. So those that. So those that might not get a job this time, I just know that it's not being overlooked. That it's very stressful trying to hire somebody. Mike and Rodney continue, there's a lot of good people that need a good job and there's, we're just thankful they would have so many folks trying to get a job here because we know it's a good place to work.
Well, I think it says a lot of the C and the benefit package that it has.
It does.
And there's numerous things in it, so.
Great, congratulations on these, and I think you've got two fine gentlemen that make us good, good employees. Also, we have another open at the Red Center. Had a couple students, they come and go from time to time. And also we have two openings, but I've only got one on the agenda tonight. And this one of, like his recommendation, part-time help is Emma Rose Chandler. And her start pay is seven twenty-five per hour. Emma is a high school student, hopefully she can be with us for a few years until she gets through school. So would there be a motion to hire Emma Rose Chandler?
How many hours is that?
Thank you.
Nineteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen hours.
Fifteen.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, man, thank you. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, ten, thank you. On the favor, say hi. Thank you very much. Our last council meeting, we had a couple zoning board members that did not get reappointed. But Mr. Bill Tyler and then Ms. Jane May spoke with Jane on Sunday and spoke with her again today. And she, she does want to be a part of the zoning board. She's, she said that she'd be glad to help serve for a little while, she didn't want a real long term. So we, we've got a three-year term, hopefully they'll be satisfactory with her. But Jane does an outstanding job and been on the zoning board for several years. And let me say, the zoning board does a great job. They probably have the board that's hard to get folks to serve and then when their time's up, they're ready, you know, they put their time in. But they don't meet that often, but when they do meet, it's usually something extremely important. So I'm just thankful that we got folks willing to serve on that board. And if anybody's watching that, we'd like to serve, we still have one or two openings that we need to feel desperately, so please give them a call if you're interested in being a part of this board. It's a very important board, they don't meet every month, they just meet usually when we have something to discuss, which is not very often, but when they do, it's, it's very important. But is there a motion to reappoint Jane for one more, our three-year term?
I'll make a motion.
Well, I am, I'll second.
Okay, Frances. On the favor, say hi. Thank you very much. Oh, I had on here discussing a post-recreation center job, not sure if we're still, we can discuss it. I would like to say that we need someone, I don't know if the council has any, any recommend tonight, but if not, please let me know by the next meeting for sure. But since Mickey has retired, it is not, so we still, please kind of figure out directions, we want to go. If y'all have any thoughts on that, I'm certainly willing to, I will stop tonight for sure by the next meeting. If you have any discussion or, please let me know.
So are you thinking about posting Mickey's job or are you thinking about posting it as a regular job?
Well, that's what we gotta decide, it's a group, it's a board. You know, what, do we need a sister, do we need a secretary, do we need a, you know, worker? I'm open because I know we're shorthanded and we'll get shorthanded. Things tend to fall through practice. I'm ready to, I'm ready to move forward. I just need some, I need some direction now.
Well, if I had a regular worker, I could always be promoted.
Absolutely.
So if we're needing to hire somebody, unless we're not gonna hire somebody as a regular worker, we're gonna hire a secretary?
Well, that's what we gotta figure out. Don't let me down the next few days, we'll, we'll definitely get it done the next meeting. Also, a reminder, our next meeting is actually Labor Day, so we'll be moving that meeting, I need a motion, I guess, to change. Do we need a motion down the angle, did that, Scott? So our next meeting will be September eighth instead of September seventh, which will be on Labor Day, so would there be a motion to change this meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, ten, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Frances. On the favor, say hi. Thank you very much. So we'll meet on the eighth, on Tuesday still, unless any of you wanna come Monday. Be by yourself. Before we adjourn, I do have a couple things to announce. With the chamber, got an email, thank you, Marla, the Aggie Block Parties. Why don't you just tell us, take the Aggie Block Party and the Last Cruise In for the chambers?
Right, the Last Cruise In is this Saturday night from five to eight p.m. uptown. So we just invited everybody to come out. We've had some new people that have actually come in, some new groups out of Mississippi, we had some from Franklin County. So we're seeing a lot of new people coming into town. We've had some of our merchants talking about them coming into the stores and, you know, first-time customers. So that's been a real good thing for our downtown. And the Aggie Block Parties will be taking place after each of the regular season, Mar City Home Football Games.
Starts this Friday?
Starts Friday night and they'll go from nine to twelve. This year, we've curtailed them with the chief's approval, I'll see him looking at me, yeah, exactly, with the chief's approval. But we've, we've narrowed it down this year where it's only going to be on the one-way street. So running from Coffee Buzz and Sports Gallery to Lowton's Furniture and the Wayne Bridge. So everything will be contained, the block parties within, within that as far as the entertainment and things like that. Brian Williams is gonna handle the entertainment, then we have some people coming at, you know, playing different groups throughout the, you know, the different block parties. Tulgate and Coffee Buzz have committed to staying open for the series of block, block parties. And we have several of our downtown merchants, even though downtown per se will not be blocked off, several of the merchants will be open. And we've asked them to make sure that they put some type of signage outside so people will be aware that they're open during the block parties.
You can still park on the other three streets, Chief?
Correct, that's, yeah, and, yeah.
Just knock that one way.
Just not, just not the one-way street, will be the only street that will be blocked.
Well, last year was very popular, I'm like, they even went up.
It was, the kids really enjoyed it and.
Folks everywhere.
Yeah, parent, and, and we are, we are really encouraging this to be a family activity. We don't want this to become a drop-off or a babysitting service because if that's what happens and the, the merchants are not seeing any business, this will be the last year.
Right.
It was, it was successful last year, so we're, again, this is to be, you know, this, this is to be something for every, you know, for all ages, so.
Well, there's been a couple new businesses open downtown too, so maybe this will help them get some exposure.
Think so, but all the home, Mar City Football Games, weather permitting, of course.
Good deal.
No charge.
I'm for free. Also, we got an invitation today from the library, many of you read Mr. Steve Flowers? It's in the paper, hey, you wanna tell us? He's gonna be at the Polydex Library, the August twenty-sixth from twelve until two, library freshmen will be served. And you got a story coming out, he writes regularly in y'all's papers.
He's a colleague statewide, we carry that, your record, but he's a book writer that was a former legislator and he tells great stories. He was, he was a page in the legislature years ago and was a protege of George Wallace and has known a lot of the great figures, you know, since then, and so. He loves to tell stories and this is, he's written a new book about a lot of the old stories and now about politics, going back to Jim Folsom. And I've started reading it, it's got a lot of good stories in it, so he'll probably tell some.
That's why he's telling my book, right?
Yeah, he, but he's, he'll probably talk about some politics, current politics, too.
But that's August twenty-sixth from twelve until two.
Yeah.
So you're welcome to come to Polydex Library and have some library presence from Mr. Flowers. Is there any other?
I have one thing, wait, that is for, well, on the backside barbecue town.
Absolutely.
They opened up, I think, last Friday and Andy seems like he's tickled, I know it's been busy every time I came by there. And for those of you that haven't ate there, you need to go try it because it's really good, so.
Does he have a, if y'all.
He, he spoke with me Saturday night there and said, Paul, he'd be calling somebody to chamber. He's very interested in doing the chamber and having the grand open ribbon cutting, so I know you'll be getting a new chamber member.
That's great.
Quickly, so, yes, we're very proud to have you business there, so, he does a great job.
He's the one that came and served us on time, isn't he?
Yes.
That brought the block here on, it was excellent.
Okay, any other thing? Is there a motion to add here? I'll make it. Okay, man, is there a second? Young girl.
I'll second.
Any other?